And Pledge of Allegiance.
That was great. Gracious God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, support as we begin this city council meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of this community. We ask that you would fill us with your grace, oh God, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Fergus Falls. We continue and continue to remind us that all we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 September 16th, 2019, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on City Administrator Andrew Bremseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. A few changes. The council has the current agenda in front of them, but just to note for the folks watching at home, number four on the consent agenda, which is an agreement with the Hockey Association, is going to be removed. There's some additional work that needs to be done to draft that agreement and some questions that need to be answered, so we'll see that coming forward. Number eight on consent agenda related to the Aquatics Committee has been pulled off by Councilmember Kwame, so we'll discuss that. And then there's a couple items under new business. First, a resolution appointing Clara Beck as the Port Authority Executive Director, which just took place at the Port Authority meeting prior to this. And then a resolution awarding a bid for PI 8217, the Sheridan Street Water Main Project. So those are the changes this evening. The other thing I wanted to mention, I see there's several folks in the audience that are here for the rental registration piece, and you're certainly more than welcome to stay, and I'd encourage that, but I will say it's not on the agenda this evening. So we won't, will not be discussing the rental registration piece this evening. It was not on the original agenda that was sent out last Thursday, and it continues to not be part of tonight's meeting. So just want to save people time if they're here for that item specifically.
Thank you, Andrew. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
Second, Anthony, thank you. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under public hearings, we have a public hearing this evening for a healthcare facility revenue note for Apple Tree Dental, and I will call on City Administrator, I will call on Bill Sawmore to get that started for us. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. In your packet, you have a resolution along with some other documents. This, we're going to have a public hearing tonight for Apple Tree Dental. They are going to be constructing a new facility over on the other end of town, and the city is acting as a conduit for that. So they're able to bond through the city, so the city will actually be the issuer of debt for this, but then we will loan those proceeds to Apple Tree Dental. Now, the city of Fergus Falls will not be liable in any manner. We're not putting our full faith and credit behind those obligations at all. What we are doing then is pledging the revenues on that project that we would receive in loan payments then to the bank, which would be forever bank issuing that. It's a not-to-exceed amount in your packet of $3.5 million. You have the loan agreement in your packet, there's a mortgage there, and then that pledge agreement where we're pledging those loan payments towards that. Again, I want to reemphasize that we're now putting the full faith and credit of the city behind this. This is their project that they're able, since it's a healthcare facility, use our bonding ability and get lower financing for that project. We've certainly done this for several other projects throughout the city as well. So we'll have the mayor open for a public hearing, but if you have any questions, we have Thad Olson from Bremer Bank, and we have representatives here from Apple Tree Dental as well to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Bill. With that, we'll go ahead and open the, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this issue, please step to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Back to the council. Do you have, go ahead, Anthony.
Can I ask, with, when you say the other side of town, where is the other side of town?
Is it 401?
327 Western Avenue.
327 Western Avenue.
So is it going to be a new building?
Yep. New, you want to, come up to the podium?
Yes, it will be a brand-new building.
So how many people will kind of work that? I mean, what do you anticipate will be the number of employees?
Well, Apple Tree Dental currently is in the mall. We have 14 employees. We're going to be adding six more full-time employees and a half-time position as well.
Well, that's a good deal.
Very good deal, yeah. Any other questions?
No.
From the council? Would someone like to author that resolution?
I'll make that resolution, Your Honor.
I would second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, there are no bids to award this evening. Under petitions and communications, we are going to proclaim that October 1st through the 7th, 2019, as Minnesota Manufacturing Week, and there's a lot of activities. Not to put you on the spot, Annie, would you like to come up and talk about some of those activities to recognize our different manufacturers in town?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and the De長 greater Fergus Falls. In front of you this evening, we're excited, is a proclamation to proclaim October 1st through 7th, Minnesota Manufacturers Week. Every year, the governor proclaims the first week in October for manufacturers to recognize all of their significant economic contributions to our state. The average wage of a manufacturing position in Minnesota is $67,000, and there's over 322,000 positions in the state of Minnesota. So very important to our state, very important to the community, also to Greater Fergus Falls. As you know, we work on business development, and we focus a lot on our current businesses, particularly manufacturers, because they have the higher-paying jobs, the larger tax base, and when we think of businesses like retailers and restaurants and that type of thing, when those come into town, they look at our site selection criteria, and that has to do with how much our average wage is in our community and how many people are within a specific radius. So the more we can help our current manufacturers with their employees, hire new jobs, get higher wages, the better we can further support retail and restaurants. So we're very excited to be doing a lot of different events this year for manufacturers. We'll be doing them all year long, but especially for Manufacturers Week. We've encouraged all of our manufacturers to have a, open their doors for public tours, and we're working specifically with three Fergus manufacturers, Shoremaster, Vector Windows, and Stonel. So on Thursday, October 3rd, they will be opening their doors to the public, and also we're working with ISD 544 to bring kids in as well. And then another notable piece for the public is we have encouraged them to promote all of their available job vacancies, so they'll be doing on-the-spot interviews as well. And also, if you look ahead on Thursday, October 10th, we're partnering with the Chamber and several other school districts to hold a West Central Minnesota Job Fair. So not only manufacturers, but other businesses are going to go to the Kennedy High School, and they're going to be bussing in people from all over the place, and not all over the place, but within a certain radius of Fergus. And then lastly, we're going to be working with M State and West Central Initiative to offer training to our current businesses, manufacturers and other businesses to help with employee recruitment, retention, promote available programs, that they can provide training to their employees and that type of thing. So you all should have received an email. If you haven't yet, you will get one. They're having, those three manufacturers are doing private behind-the-scenes tours for elected officials and regional representatives, so we hope we can all see you there, so I can answer any questions if you have.
Thank you very much, Annie. Anyone have any questions? Annie?
Nope.
Thanks, Annie. And with that, I will read this proclamation. Whereas manufacturing is a dynamic and robust industry crucial, crucial to the health and strength of Minnesota's diverse economy, and whereas workers took home $21.6 billion in wages from Minnesota manufacturing jobs in 2018, the second-largest total payroll among private-sector industries, and whereas manufactured exports brought $21 billion into Minnesota's economy in 2018, and whereas manufacturing provides 322,000 highly skilled, well-paying jobs which significantly contribute to Minnesota's high standard of living and economic vitality. Now therefore, I, Ben Shire, Mayor of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of October 1st to the 7th, 2019, shall be observed as Minnesota Manufacturing Week in Fergus Falls. Thank you. Also, under petitions and communications, we have an update on the NP Park project that the Nunequanas is working on, and I will call on Sarah Duffy and Steve Vigasoff from the Nunequanas. Great to have you guys here tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, councilmembers, for having us here to update you. As you know, we were before you, maybe about a year ago, to talk about doing the water study that came back, and the water study, the intent of that was to get a green light to see if we could raise the footprint of the playground, so that we could therefore start fundraising money to put in a new playground there. So as you know, the findings of the water study came back and gave us a green light to proceed with that. So I've had some meetings with Bill, and we've talked about, one of the main hurdles for us is, interestingly enough, I found through this process that Fergus Falls Nunequanas is not a 501(c)(3) tax-accepted organization, even though we're a service club that raises money for children. So we've been trying to work with different entities and organizations to find a fiscal host for the project. And so the, where we are right now is we've, well, we've rounded many roadblocks for fiscal host, and so I think there's a, is a resolution in front of the council today. My understanding is, is to the city, our ask is that the city act as our fiscal host for that project, and so an overall budget of the project right now is 400,000 with $46,000 to raise it up, is not incorporated into the design. So before we can kind of take the, the next step and do our fundraising portion, we need to have a fiscal host, and so that's our ask tonight as far as an update, is for the city to act as that fiscal host, and Bill, you can give an update on that.
Explain a little bit more on that. So we've certainly done this for a lot of other projects. The city is only fiscal host for projects that relate to the city. Well, this is an NP park, it's a park that the city owns, so obviously, we have met that test of that relation. So what you, you know, adopting that resolution, and we would be the fiscal host, and we would actually accept donations then, you know, they're spearheading this campaign, but we would actually accept those donations of the city and direct their deposit to the general fund. And then, when it comes time to do the project, the city would actually go through the bidding process, because it's going to be an asset in one of our parks, therefore, we need to follow the city municipal bid laws with that. So did I miss anything, or?
I think that sums it up, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Bill. So with that, the ask is, would someone like to offer a resolution?
I'll offer that.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Jim. Anyone have any questions, Sarah or Steve? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on that project, too. It's a really exciting project. We're looking forward to being a partner with you.
Thanks.
On the consent agenda, you have a copy on your desk. There's also, Lynn's putting one on the board, which will reflect the unamended consent agenda. So again, as, as Andrew mentioned, item number four is being removed, and item number eight is being asked to be discussed separately. So is there any other items that people would like to discuss separately on the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda with the exceptions of four and eight.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thanks. Thanks, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number eight is a motion authorizing the Aquatics Committee to review a third site for an aquatic center. This was discussed on Wednesday morning in some detail. So I guess what I'd look for is, first, let's get a motion on the table, and then we can have the discussion.
I'll offer that motion.
Thank you. Second to the motion?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thanks, Justin. Okay. Discussion, did you have some comments? Scott?
Yes, thank you.
You bet.
I had a couple of, couple of points to make. First of all, regarding the process for how this came to be in front of us in the first place, and then secondly, adds to one of the specifics that ought to be included in the motion as a, either an amendment or as a separate motion to be in addition to this one. The motion that was brought before us on Wednesday at our committee the whole last week was to add a third site to the Aquatic Center program, design and development that U.S. Aquatics has been asked to do. The committee had, the Aquatics Committee, as I understand it, had met and, on their own, come to the conclusion that of the two sites that had been selected or determined to be on the list, that a third site ought to be added to it, and so they made the decision to add that third site. So my first question, then, as far as the process, is the council at our last meeting had approved this contract for 47-some thousand dollars with U.S. Aquatics, and it seems to me that any changes to that contract have to be initiated and approved by the council. It doesn't seem that we delegated any authority on what sites should be involved in that to the committee. Not discounting the committee's work on this, I think that the work they've done has been terrific, and I think that a lot of what's been presented has been very useful, very good. But I don't think they've got the authority to decide to add a third site or fifth site, any site. We made a deal with U.S. Aquatics, and as a council, I think that's up to us to either add or subtract from what we're asking them to do.
And to, just to clarify, just that point, that's what this motion would do, is the council would authorize that Aquatics Committee to do that?
Right.
With this motion.
And we voted on this motion on Wednesday and essentially approved it, and it was going to go through on the consent agenda tonight and basically happen. So I'm assuming that it's going to still pass tonight, you know? It did on Wednesday, and there's reason to think that that's going to happen again. So I made my point as far as the process. I think that at this point, then, I'd like to ask to either amend the motion or have an additional motion to add DeLagoon Park to the list of sites to be considered for design and review. And I think it would be very important for the city to do this for this group of reasons. First of all, we've got a lot of room out there, it's a site that's got lots of options, room for expansion, it's owned by the city, we wouldn't be looking at additional expense to acquire the property. It already is used for many recreational uses, baseball, soccer, camping, there's already people driving there, there's already people making their way out there to use those other things, there's hundreds of people using the soccer fields, using the baseball fields, driving past there to go to Pebble Beach and use the pool or the beach there and the other recreational facilities. I just see it as a real complementary use for this site, especially with the campground and the additional recreational facilities there. And for me, it's also a real economic development issue. By placing the park at this location, it's another way to draw people in, you know, Johnny's at the soccer game, and Mary gets to go to the pool, and you can bring people in and have a real complementary use there. And then beyond that, just last month, in our council retreat, we identified DeLagoon Park as one of our top five priorities for the city. We've got a separate committee working on a master plan for the campground. Last week, we heard about a Wi-Fi program, in fact, we just in the, just in the consent agenda now on number three. We heard about a Wi-Fi project, the Park Region Telephone wants to put Wi-Fi into the park, and the public access, we just got a couple hundred thousand plus to update that thing. There's a master plan in place for the campground, we're working on things for the soccer facilities and concessions, and all of this activity going on out there, it seems like this could piggyback and really be a big piece of the puzzle out there. And I think that we ought to include it.
Thanks, Scott. I don't know if Justin or Caroline, did you, I know you guys, we discussed this quite at length on Wednesday morning, and I know you guys had some comments then, if you wanted to make any comments. I assume the Aquatics Committee has looked at DeLagoon Park as one of the sites?
Yes, we have. And there was a committee that was made up of quite a few members prior to our committee doing this back in '06, and so it has been a part of the conversation with the experts that we hired that builds pools. There's a lot of reasons why it fell off the list, it didn't make the top 12, so I think I'll leave it at that. I think we made some notable points, but we did look at it, and it's been part of our conversation, I think, at our committee level, and currently, our recommendation is to move forward to the three that we're reviewing.
Sure. Tom?
Yeah, I would just say that I, I wouldn't support putting the aquatic center at DeLagoon for two main reasons. The first being that, that people have reached out to me and said, it's just too far out of town. You know, I think we need something that's, that's close to the center of the city to maximize access for the most people, make it the most bikeable, the most walkable for the people that live in the city. And then also, too, because I think that the, the committee has done their due diligence, and I would, I would support the work that they have already done.
Thanks, Tom. So we have a motion, a second. I think we should probably vote on that motion, and Scott, if you'd like to make additional motion, I think that's the best way to handle this. So we have a motion, a second. If there's any further comments, the motion is...
I would just say that I would agree with Councilmember Kwame that I'm not sure what the point of doing a study on, like, East Kerbrite is, if, if it's not going to be ultimately considered, so I don't know whether we would want to waste that time or money on it. And so, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't see, people go out to DeLagoon now for, as, as Councilmember Kwame said, there's a lot of recreation out there. So I, I too would support actually adding, I would, I would support dropping East Kerbrite and adding DeLagoon to, to the study.
Thanks, Anthony. So just for clarification, the motion that's on the table right now, that we'll vote on, is the third, adding the third site, which was recommended by the committee on Wednesday morning, right? Clear on that? Just talking about those three sites for now, so. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Looks like the motion passes five to three. So if there's any further discussion?
Five, six, two, I think. There's confusion down here.
Right. Were you, everybody's, all in favor of the motion? Say aye. Five, all opposed. Three, five, three. Got it? Okay, is there any further discussion on that?
I could say some more, yeah.
I mean, would you like to make a motion?
I would.
I mean, I think you, I think we understand you want to add DeLagoon, if you'd like to...
Yeah, I guess I'd like to make that a specific motion, to add DeLagoon to the list of sites for design and review by U.S. Aquatics. I think it's our responsibility to do that.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion?
I just have a procedural question, I guess. If that same motion was made on Wednesday, it's okay to, and voted on, it's okay to do it again?
Since it's at the committee, you know, yeah, I think it just needs it to the, to the council to vote on, so.
Okay.
The committee is different than the council, so.
Okay.
Thank you. So motion is to, to add the DeLagoon as a site, as a fourth site, all?
I'd like to just make one further comment. I think that the comments that Tom made as far as being bikeable, walkable, all that, I understand. It's a very valid point, and it's very significant for a number of people. I'm not trying to downplay that. But I don't feel that that one point alone is enough to trump all of the other potential positives that DeLagoon has to offer, and I think that we ought to consider DeLagoon.
Thanks, Scott. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Looks like it's five to three against that motion. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance and resolutions. Item number one is a resolution, pardon me, requesting an evaluation of a change order for public improvement 9506, phase-two demolition at the Regional Treatment Center. I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Say, say, Brian. And I wonder if I could just ask one thing. We talked about a third site, but nowhere in the conversation did that third site get named. It was Roosevelt Park. So I think that that ought to be, that ought to be named, just so people are aware of it.
Thanks, Scott. Clarification.
Sorry, Brian.
No, you're good, Scott. That should have been in the motion, and we did mention that on Wednesday morning. Thanks, you're accurate. Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Before you, is in regards to public improvement 9506, the RTC phase-two demolition project. As you know, Carlton Palpines was awarded a contract for this. If you view up the site, they've made substantial completion on the project. The quote matter at hand right now is in regards to the detachment from behind the tower, the interface. We determined a lot of unknown conditions that we classified at this time. Unknown conditions are, as a result of not visually accessible during the time, reasonables. Unknown methods used at the time, too, as well, that contribute to this. So Carlton Palpines is requesting, through their subcontractor, a change order in amount of approximately $258,500 and a month extension on this time. So before that, Bruce from Stan Tech is here. We're going to go through some slides. If anything, I want to give the council a general understanding of the deterioration of this building and the subsequent costs that we're looking at right now. But Bruce is here, he goes through, he's got a lot, if you look at the handouts, a lot of leaders pointed to a lot of areas, so I'll go through it, maybe not by one by one, but please feel free to ask questions.
Good evening, Bruce.
Good evening, Your Honor. Just as a point of reference for everybody looking at the area here on the floor plan, this is basically where the courtyard used to be. Actually, there were two courtyards. There was a connecting link between Building 22 on your right and Building 26 on your left that's just to the north of the elevator, and then there was a second, second connecting link that tied Buildings 25 and 3 together, that created two courtyard areas. And so basically, the right half of this courtyard area was concealed by construction of Building 25, the connecting link, and the original Building 25. So a lot of this was unseen. Tried to do the best I could with adding notes where I thought there would be work, but the contractors, basically without being able to see it, really couldn't, you know, other than reading my notes, couldn't really quantify the amount of work that would be required to complete what the notes indicated, and based on our work with SHPO, the restoration of these existing exterior walls was part of the mitigation for taking down Buildings 25 and 32. So that, the first wall, north wall of Building 22, which is on the east side, where Building 25 connected to it, you can see on the, the wall on the left there was where the concrete steps were poured up against the wall, and if you went in, that was door number 22, that you went in to get into Building 25. One of the things from looking at that with the note on the left, that wing wall, based on looking at it from the exterior, appeared that that wall actually butted into 22, it's actually toothed into it. They actually mortared over the full brick that were toothed in. So there's more work on that wing wall to take that down. Basically, the plan is to take it from the brick that's painted up towards the top and bring it down straight, flush that out and get that cleaned up. And then for whatever reason, with the top note on the right, when they did the connection to 20, 25 and 22, they put interior-type brick for infill. Well, you can't have that when you take the wall down. Somehow, that whole wall, we didn't realize this, because it was all covered up. They have to take pretty much that whole wall that's not painted, and then what's covered with the plaster and stuff, now, all of that brick needs to go out, put an exterior brick in that will last, because the interior brick's got a face that's too soft to stand up to the exterior. And then right below the plywood, the concrete, they actually cut the brick out and poured the concrete in to connect the two. So again, it was a detail that was unknown at the time that we put the drawings together and then they did. and then they did. These two photos have lots of arrows and lots of notes, basically indicating, you know, the conditions that were unseen or unforeseen, not expected. The main one on this wall is down at the bottom, above the first row of steel beams that they again, you know, they peeled the face brick out when they inserted the steel beams in to support that first floor of the addition that was done. And then they basically went up to the window openings and we're not really sure why. I talked with the mason, he wasn't really sure why either, but they just cobbled, again, interior type brick into that opening. So it's basically, the entire wall needs to be taken down from the window sills down below the beam pockets and all reconstructed with new face brick. Similarly, on the second floor, they did infill with interior brick again, so that all of those infills need to be taken out and replaced with exterior brick to make And this is the north wall, building one, that was again covered by the addition that was done, the courtyard. This wall isn't quite as shocking with the amount of unforeseen stuff, but again, at the, at the main floor lines, they again went in and cut the brick out and poured it back in slab into it. They did the same thing at the second level. They infilled the window openings with concrete block on the right, brick on the left, bright materials on the second floor. And then the arches on the second floor all have to be reconstructed because of the way that they were cut apart and not stabilized when they were cut apart to run the ductwork This is west wall, building 26, that was connected to the connecting link. Again, not as big a deal, but the concrete block was actually cut into the building when they made the connecting links. The plan is to cut the concrete block that forms the walls, that four inches, so the new brick can be toothed into the existing brick, so it's all flushed out when it's done. And those openings will just be flushed with the existing face brick. We're not going to try to create existing, you know, fake openings to represent anything else because the wall was flat. And this was the other shot, when it was taken apart on the left half. They went in and constructed some steel plates and beams and things to support the wall above when they tore everything else apart. And then they used a combination of plate tile, interior brick, concrete block, and concrete to fill in the opening, all of which needs to be taken apart so that we can create that a weather type exterior. And they, they've already installed the concrete block foundation up because that's all waterproof and covered with insulation at the bottom there. So they've already done some of the work that's included in this proposal, just to get them up to grades, they can keep continuing on the backfilling. And similarly, on this side, what we were able to see with that wing wall that's sticking out, I thought it was butted up, and it's actually, again, it's actually been toothed in. And the final picture is of the wall that was visible and exposed, just showing the level of deterioration. This is all covered under the contract. This isn't part of the change order request, but just so everybody could see the amount of deterioration of face brick.
Thanks, Bruce. So questions from the council? First one, so the $258,000 change order, is that within the funds available?
Yes, that is within the funds. We've got a $500,000 allowance that we carried for doing hazardous materials. This additional worth would be covered within that.
So it fits within the contingency?
So the bottom line, contract sum doesn't have to change.
Good. Any other questions?
I would unmake them.
Offer that resolution?
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. And I would like to point out one thing to the council, if you weren't made aware of this already, but on the left side of the plan, we've indicated the concrete pad. We're actually saving the utility tunnel, about 27 feet of the original utility tunnel that connected from building 25 through building, or from building one through building 25 to building 32. We're keeping that, we're putting in the concrete pad on top of that, and that will be pretty close to flush with the asphalt pavement around it. But that portion of the utility tunnel was in very good condition, and we had conversations with contractor and Brian and Ben actually came out the day that we were looking at that and considering it and made the decision to save that as representative of the utility tunnels that were originally constructed when this campus was first built.
Thanks for that, Bruce.
Thank you.
Ben?
Scott?
The comments that were made is going to add, was it 250, 258? What was the thousand, how many?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand. And then you said plus one month to the project. What was the, what were we expecting the project to wrap up by? And so what does this make it?
The current final completion date is June 30th, so this pushes it out to the end of July.
Next summer. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution terminating the letter of intent with American Covenant Senior Housing Foundation for the East and West Detached Buildings. The RTC, I'll call on city administrator Andrew Brunson.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. As you may recall, a few years ago, the city of Fergus Falls entered into a letter of intent agreement with American Covenant Senior Housing Foundation pursuant to the redevelopment of East and West Detached up at the RTC campus. The intent was to develop those buildings into low-income senior housing. We most recently, on June 3rd, 2019, extended that letter of intent because the development group was in the process of applying for housing infrastructure bonds from Minnesota Housing and weren't going to find out the result of that application until November. So we needed to extend it through the end of the year to see if their application was indeed successful. Unfortunately, recently, the developer learned that their submission was not going to be considered by Minnesota Housing due to missing information related to whether or not the development group had the financial wherewithal to do this project. And so as a result, the development group has said that they don't see a path forward with this redevelopment project based on this unsuccessful application of Minnesota Housing, and they are going to move on, move on down the road. So what I'm asking the city council to do this evening is to pass a resolution terminating this letter of intent, which also provided exclusivity. It's set to expire at the end of the year, but I would like to terminate it now and provide them the 30-day notice required within that agreement. I also mentioned in my memo in the council packet that we had done a lot of work to prepare for this project if it were successful, including getting a plat approved as well as rezoning. The rezoning makes a lot of sense for the campus, so I don't have any concern with that. But we did hold the final approved plat, and we did not record that with the county to wait and see if this project was successful, as those boundary lines were drawn specifically for this developer. So my intention is to keep the existing property lines intact and have the parcel remain as one and not to record or finalize that plat and notify the development group that we are moving on as well. So that's, that's what I have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'm looking again for a resolution terminating the letter of intent for East and West Detached.
Questions in the council for Andrew? Now, if someone would like to offer that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Next, we'll have the 2020 budget and levy resolutions. I'll call on our city finance director, Bill Sonmore.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Looking down a couple of slides here. So tonight, we're at September 16th, so asking you for the approval of our proposed budget, our proposed levy, and setting a public meeting date for December 2nd after 6:00 p.m. That's state law, we hold it 6:00 p.m. or later. So you can see from the calendar where we're going from here. Just going to pop ahead. This is also, we made you some copies, this is on your desks. Wanted to point out, because what's changed since the last time we were together, we did get numbers from Otterdale County, and we do have market value growth, both in the area of existing dwellings and commercial businesses, but new construction as well, which impacts the tax capacity rate. So our proposed tax levy, we're going to ask you to approve tonight, is the $6,682,362. Now, that was a 4.95% increase above the 2019 levy. But when you take into consideration the factors of the growth in the market value of the city, which then increases the tax capacity, that tax rate would go from 58.601 to 59.585, or a 1.68% increase. So that in comparison to that 4.95. Certainly, we like to see that growth in new construction in the city because that's more of the pie to go around them, that you can spread the tax burden on. But again, as we saw last year, you know, you'd have to look at individual cases. We can't do that here at this setting, but look at individual cases where, what happens with your own existing market values as well. So that's the change there. Our total budget, we're going to ask you to approve, is that 2020 budgeted expenditures of $39,229,677. So that's what's before you...
Thirty-nine million, that's billion.
Million, 39 million?
What did I say?
Thousand.
Okay.
For once I get it correct, for once I get it correct to finance. There isn't much of a difference between those two numbers.
I don't even know what I'm saying anymore. So I'm not going to go through the whole budget presentation for you again. We just did that at our last meeting. But that's in the resolution. And then, yeah, the public meeting date for December 2nd after 6:00 p.m. So those are the three actions. Now, I'm going to turn over to Andrew to talk a little bit as well, as far as some other things we want to clarify in the budget as well. So I'll sit down and let you talk a bit.
All right, thank you, Bill. And if I make such a mistake as Bill, please point it out. Your Honor, members, as you all know, unfortunately, the Hoot Lake Power Plant is set to close in 2021, and as a result of that, we're going to lose about 6.5% of our tax base. And so as the Tax Levy Committee was working through this budget, with that in mind, they had asked the city council, or recommended to the city council, to make a directive to review staffing efficiencies within the city of Fergus Falls. And as you all recall, the council unanimously directed the Personnel Committee to explore staffing efficiencies related to the organization. And so just on behalf of the Personnel Committee, I want to report back tonight that we have identified a few things that we can do to realize some efficiencies. Working with department heads and others in the organization, we've identified three positions that we feel that can be eliminated at the end of the year. So just real briefly, the fleet manager position, the park and forestry manager position, and then a part-time office assistant here in City Hall are all positions that we identified that could be eliminated as of the end of the year, as we're proactively preparing for the loss in tax base. Obviously, not an easy decision to make, and obviously even more difficult conversations to have, but those employees have been informed of these changes, and the budget before you this evening reflects these changes. This also couples with the change we made a few weeks ago by not backfilling the city planner position and hiring Sourcewell and realizing about a $55,000 savings as a result of that contract as well. With these three positions and that Sourcewell savings, we're looking at over $300,000 that we've eliminated from this budget before you this evening. Not all dollars impacting the levy per se, but certainly impacting the city's budget. And just wanted to make you all aware of that this evening, of course. Again, not an easy decision, something we don't take lightly and something we hate to have to do, but I think we owe it to the public to continue to sharpen our pencil as we move forward towards 2021 and preparing for the impact that that's going to have on our local taxpayers. And I think the Tax Levy Committee is dedicated to continue looking at this budget between now and December when we make the final changes, not related to staffing, but related to other expenditures within the city that we can potentially eliminate or reduce. And I can say that confidently as a third of that committee, and maybe my fellow committee members would, would indicate the same.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Andrew. I think that as well said, we're going to continue to look for efficiencies in this budget, but it's been presented to you as the preliminary budget that would be approved tonight, with the final budget having a public hearing in December, as Bill mentioned on the, on his timeline, so.
Remembering with that tax levy number, we can only come down by December, we cannot go above this. So we're setting the maximums here tonight.
Setting ceiling tonight, so. With that, are there any questions? If not, we would, or actually, let's get the resolution, then we can now answer any questions.
I have a question. Can we do A, B, and C in one resolution?
Lynn, do you recall, did we roll them into one last year?
I think they, I think we did separately.
Let's do them separate, then we know where.
Okay.
Let's start with the resolution approving the 2020 proposed tax levy. Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. B under three, it would be a resolution approving the city's 2020 proposed budget. Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Caroline.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. And finally, we entertain a resolution setting the public hearing, public meeting for the 2020 levy and budget for Monday, December 2nd, 6 o'clock here in the council chambers during our regularly scheduled first meeting in December.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Bill. Item number four is a resolution approving the tax abatement and business subsidy agreement between the city of Fergus Falls and North Star Behavioral Health LLC. And I will call on, once again, I'll call on Bill Sonmore to lead us in that discussion.
I can get Tom tied on this one. So before you is tax abatement agreement. You should have that in your packet. Recalling, this is for the North Star Behavioral Health. It's a 10-year tax abatement for a maximum of, and I wrote it, $381,000 about will be the maximum that would be. So over 10 years, we are partnering with the county on this, as they are doing the tax abatement as well. So looking tonight for you to have that approval and the business subsidy agreement that is in this as well, that's required by state law.
Sure.
Couple that approval with that. Anything else you want to add to that?
So just to, this is for a 60-bed facility, chemical dependency and mental health treatment critically needed in our community. We thank the county for working so hard to get this building filled, and thank North Star Behavioral for coming to Fergus Falls. We're really, really appreciative that you're working with the county and with the city. Again, critical services needed in the community, so thank you.
Question?
Scott?
Ben, maybe you can answer this. I thought that the original maximum was closer to 500,000, 400 and something. So is that other portion the county's?
The total with the county, our portion. No, with classification, if there's a classification change, that could even be dropped down, correct? Come on up, you have.
Good evening, Nick.
Councilmembers, I'll just provide a little clarification. My name's Nick Leonard with Otterdale County. So it's, it's based on its current assessed class. It's likely that that, we anticipate that that will change, so we built this based on that existing class, but we anticipate that being considerably less. The other thing is while it's a 10-year run, this will be reevaluated at five years. And so if that lease is terminated or if it's acquired, those are all things that would trigger a reevaluation of that. But rather than go through the legal work, in the other word, we haven't built in the event that we do need to come back, we can.
So with that, if, if that value that it's based upon does decrease, then of course, it's only based on the taxes that are actually paid. So this maximum sets an upper limit, but you would only pay based upon the taxes paid by the organizations.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions for either Nick or Bill?
I will offer that resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you. Item number five is a second reading of ordinance 97 series dealing with the sales and use tax that's been to committee. It's had its first reading, and that's, just a reminder, that's aligning our ordinances with states to collect online sales tax, basically. with states to collect online sales tax basically, correct?
Correct.
Any questions? Roll call.
Armisen.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number six is also a second reading, ordinance ninety-one seventh series dealing with tobacco. Again, this is just aligning our local ordinances with those that supersede them at the county level that is passing. So any questions? Roll call, please.
Armisen.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number seven would be a resolution designating downtown parking restrictions. Guy, do you want to talk to this?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Previously, you had authorized the city attorney to draft an ordinance restricting the parking downtown from Kabor to Washington, Union Court, Mill, and Cascade. When he started looking at that, he determined that there's already ordinance on the books. So we don't need that ordinance to be written. It's just a resolution, and it's a declaration from the city engineer's office to put that parking restriction in place.
Got it. Thank you, Guy. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. Roll call, please.
Armisen.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution approving the Glacial Edge Trail Design Development Contract with Hagstrom Engineering. And I guess I'd just start the conversation by saying that the group that's working on the trails, potential project for a twenty twenty sales tax project, met today to discuss this and other issues. But this is one of the issues that we discussed, and Ryan was a part of that group, Caroline's a part of that group, I'm a part of that group. And we came to the conclusion that we recommend to the council to wait, to hold off on getting the engineering work done for one A and one B. The first section that, for the twenty-four thousand or the twenty-seven, the first one was engineering work for a federal transportation alternatives grant application that required some more engineering work to be done. That was for twenty, it'd be funding for year twenty twenty-four. However, in light of waiting on the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails application to see if that's successful, we recommend waiting a year before pursuing engineering work for one A and one B, which would be from Central Lakes Trail to Veterans Park. So that's part one of our recommendations, to not pursue that engineering contract at this point, but wait until see the outcome and see what is involved in the potential sales tax proposal. And the second item there is the twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars from Union Haven to defer, and we recommend that we wait to see, again, to see the results of the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails application. And if it's successful and when that engineering work is actually needed to be done to start construction, then we would engage the firm with that. Ryan, is that accurate from what we talked about this morning? Good? Any questions from the council? You guys good with that? Yep, thanks. Oh, yeah, Ryan, would you like to, I think someone asked, Anthony asked on just the status of where the projects are at. So did you want to speak to this map that you created?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, after the discussion one today, there was a request to take a look at a map and put together some timelines on the various stages of the Glacial Edge Trail project. So if you have a map, you have a hard copy of the map, but I do have an electronic copy of it here as well. So this is just phase one and kind of the first half of phase two of the Glacial Edge Trail. The map that you have talks about three different stages or three different, yeah, three different phases of the Glacial Edge Trail. And also included in there, the dairy acquisition, LCC MR grants. So there was discussion about all the different grants and how they tie them together and what the timeline is. So the first grant that kind of associated with this project area was the first LCC MR grant that the city received back in twenty sixteen. That is for this area highlighted in red, acquiring the person's farm for the dairy property. That grant and the acquisition of the dairy needs to be closed out by the end of June twenty twenty. There's a second LCC MR grant that was applied for and received by the city for construction of the Glacial Edge Trail for the downtown stretch area green here. That project period began July of this year and expires in June of twenty twenty-one. The portion just to the west of there was that GMR PTC application that the city applied for back in July for constructing this trail along Stanton Avenue and through the dairy site, Arica County and Storm Society. It's the section in blue here. That would be funding allocated to the city beginning in July of twenty twenty-one, and the funds would expire. We'd have to have that constructed by June of twenty twenty-two. And then the last section here, phase one and one B, which we may have just mentioned, the trail subsidy wants to hold off on for a while until we hear more about our other applications. We, the design engineering that was proposed was then for a fiscal year twenty twenty-four transportation alternatives funding application for the live section there. But, you know, this just shows how far out the transportation alternatives funding program is. It's, as we did apply this year, it's, you know, two to three years beyond any of the projects that we currently have funding for. By waiting to not apply this year and apply the next year, we'd be three to four years out from all of the current projects we have going for Glacial Edge Trail. So that's the map, and I hope that helps to clear up some of the timeline.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions?
Anthony? Thank you, Ryan. That was my concern, was that I just wanted to see that we get some execution on some of the things that we've got done. And I know it means perhaps waiting a year, which would push it back another year, but I think, you know, if we had more of these pieces physically actioned, then that will support our application in the future. Thank you.
And also just to add, there could be other opportunities that the trail committee could look at in the meantime as well. So, yeah. Scott?
Ryan, did you say that the transportation alternatives program money, was that a federal program or state program?
That's a federal program.
Thanks.
Any other questions on Ryan's map? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Item number nine is resolution authorizing the purchase of a fire truck. Chief Mukau is here with his, some of his squad. Welcome, chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the council, good evening. And yes, about half of our committees here, and just full disclosure, I probably will get Tom tied with something. I'm going backwards.
I set the stage for you.
I actually made a note, so I'm like, okay, Bill had an error.
Right? Makes us all feel better when Bill makes a mistake, right?
In this case, you should go for five point six million as opposed to five hundred and sixty-four.
The number has changed. I had a misprint in the package.
When you retire, Bill, this is going to be brought up, you know that.
I know it well.
But I do stand in front of you all tonight with some excitement, but also knowing, you know, our ask is it's significant. But we had a group that got together to look at the replacement of our engine two, which is a nineteen eighty-seven engine or pumper, Fire Service as it's called. We work off of a thirty-year truck rotation, so this one is, had come due a couple of years ago. However, you know, coming onboard a couple of years ago, it was one of those things as an entire achievement, let's just give it a little bit of time. So we did pick it out a couple of extra years, but as we're finding out, prices aren't getting any cheaper, things, you know, definitely they're getting quite a bit higher. Through our committee's work, you know, they've made visits to neighboring communities, met with vendors. We've worked with three vendors specifically to come up with some pricing on a truck. And this one's maybe a little bit different than the past, as we've talked about Sourcewell here within the council meetings and that city planner position. Well, fire trucks have kind of gone that way as well, where there's cooperative purchasing rather than a bid process. So these, Sourcewell or HGAC is another one, that they've kind of done the bidding for us. So we go to those sites, work with the vendors on a specific truck, and then try to build it to what we need within the parameters allowed, within the bid that's already been done. So with that, our group did come up with a recommendation to go with E one, which is Fire Safety USA out of Rochester, Minnesota, for our next engine or the replacement of the engine. A few things that stood out with this truck. One is, I guess admittedly by waiting, we've got into a brand-new cab design, which as a company, they just rolled out here about a month ago. So our truck would have that. You know, with that, there's just some things within the cab on how the, something as simple as an air conditioner, how it's more low-profile and it's up into the ceiling versus blocking the firefighter's view from the back. So maybe it seems kind of little, but when you're in a truck and you're trying to look out, it's some good things for our members. But the truck has an onboard generator. And one of the requests I had for the group was something that's more ergonomically friendly for our firefighters. So with that, any hose deployment, ladder deployment, stuff coming off of the truck is, the way it stands right now, should be no higher than about this reach. So that was a huge task and a lot of compromises made to get us to that point, but I think we're pretty excited, or I think we are pretty excited for that. This one here is, if you've seen our trucks coming down the road, the last new truck was two thousand nine, and it was kind of a sister truck to the one in two thousand five. And that one, it has the ladders outside of the truck. This one, everything is inboard. So it's a very clean, clean-looking apparatus, which, again, in our climate is pretty good, and admittedly in our tree city, USA, which is awesome, but we do work a couple trees, ladders, that we pull them off the truck, but we come back and there's branches stuck in the ladder. So having things inboard is a really good plus for us. The other things with the E one, the warranty was, you know, all trucks have a decent warranty, but the E one really kind of stood out. And notably is the twenty-five-year frame warranty. They have galvanized frame, and all the other ones, they usually ended about twenty. Well, when we look at a thirty-year truck, hey, that's five extra years of warranty in comparison to the other two vendors that we looked at. And the one-year factory warranty, and then Fire Safety USA, they'll come up at the eleven, eleven-month after being in service, do a pump test for us, for free, as they say, and I'm sure it's in the, it's in the stack. But they'll come up, and they'll extend that warranty one more year as the local vendor. So we thought that was a pretty, pretty good deal. So like I said, pricing comes through the, through the Sourcewell, and if it does, you know, they get approval through you tonight, because the committee still has some work to do, you know, to kind of make sure we hone in on, you know, what are some items that need in. We're always, you know, it's like budgeting, we're looking through the spec as to, example, I told Andrew and Bill last week, just the rear lights, we can go to a combination light and save a thousand dollars off the lights. Well, those are types of things that now, once we have the truck, so to speak, built kind of what we kind of wanted, now we can really fine-tooth some of that stuff. So with that, our ask is authorization to purchase one two thousand twenty E one fire engine from Fire Safety USA, Optus Minnesota, for five hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If that'll take any questions.
Should I explain the financing side of it a little bit?
Yeah, please do, Bill.
So, yeah, with Ryan's ask of that five sixty-four, one seventy-seven, we are looking at also, we had in the budget a hundred thousand dollars for a generator for the fire department. So we'll look at that in the future and come back to you with that. But Ryan would look at using in twenty twenty a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of cash that we have built up over time through capital outlay, and we've been saving that for this purpose. So the remaining balance, we would finance with what's called an equipment certificate. You would go ten years on that. It's like issuing a small bond. We would even have the option of maybe placing it with a local bank. We did that the last go-around, a number of years ago, but, so we'll look at that. But so Ryan would order this truck now, we would not pay for it until it is delivered. That's true with the cash portion and financing, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, we wouldn't have any cash outlay at this point, but in late in twenty twenty, when it would come to delivery, we'd put the financing together and then put probably a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of cash down on the deal as well. And then we'll come back with that generator and see how does that fit into this. We would finance that at the same time if you decide to do that. If for some reason we didn't do that generator, then we would just finance the balance of that truck. That would be something else, but that's the goal, so that's kind of the plan on that.
Thanks, Bill. Question on?
On the other side, though?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
I want to add, the levy for those two, if we put those together, that first levy would start in twenty twenty-one, and it would range from like fifty-eight thousand five hundred maybe up to sixty-four thousand. I'm running some numbers with our bonding people, and that's the range for that levy that would go ten years then. And that amount is to finance both of those, the generator and the truck.
And just to clarify, so the generator is generated for at the station, correct?
Yes, the generator we're talking about here is the fire station.
Yep, so it stays at the fire station, because you had mentioned that that one has an onboard generator, that's specifically for that truck?
Correct.
Got it.
Ben?
Yes, Scott?
The existing truck, then, number two, is there a trade-in resale value to that? How does that play into this? Can we get something for it and put toward this purchase price?
Um.
Or do we keep using?
Yeah, I may too. So you guys can help me, but I think when the last truck that went out for surplus was our engine three, and I believe that brought three or five thousand dollars. So maybe there's not.
So this thing's pretty well depreciated.
Yeah, there's not, there's not too good of a resale or trade-in value with those.
Thanks.
But whatever we would get would certainly go back to the fire department towards this.
All right. What are the wishes of the council?
I will offer that, Your Honor.
I will second that.
That resolution, and we have a second. Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Armisen.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thanks, chief.
Thank you so much. It's Andy's birthday, so he's really excited.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, yeah.
You guys, I think you can tell you have the full support of the city council. We really appreciate the work that you do, so thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, and Andrew can attest to this, is our nerves with, when we started seeing the pricing and what fire trucks are costing, but I hope you trust us in our due diligence, visiting local fire departments, that the costs are, we are actually a little bit lower than some of our neighbors. So I think we've done a, they have done a very good job on some given tapes, and we'll have a very promising fire truck for our community. We're excited for that.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, under presentations of claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
One million.
One nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. And if there's any questions, we will direct them to our highly capable finance director. Hearing none is her resolution to.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Armisen.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports. There are no reports from staff or administrative officers, and there is no old or unfinished business. business. Two items under new business. Item number one is a resolution appointing Clara Beck as the Port Authority Executive Director. And did that action take place at the Port Authority earlier this evening?
It did.
Correct?
And it was approved.
It was approved? Any, any comments? Any?
Yeah, Your Honor, members, just want to welcome Clara Beck to our team here. She started a week ago from tomorrow, so almost a week under her belt already. Great to have her on board. One of the duties associated with the community development position is the executive director of the Port Authority, and that's the action this evening before you.
That's great.
Is unanimously approved by the port, and now the council just needs to affirm that as well, and Clara can be off and running.
All right, sounds great. Who would like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Caroline.
I'll second.
Would you like to second that, Krista? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Welcome, Clara.
Welcome aboard.
Item number two is a resolution awarding a bid for Public Improvement 8217, which is a Sheridan Street Water Main project, and we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Ivaro.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll try to get this brief. We, last Friday, we accepted a quote for a small water main project, replacement project. This is in Valleys, Sheridan, between Washington and Union. I laid out some information in there that we may be looking at. We're going to do some exploratory excavation based on what we might find in the railroad. But anyways, we received a total of two quotes. Delta Construction submitted a gross quote in the amount of $79,870.44. The engineer's estimated cost was $92,130. It's acceptable based on the amount perceived. We'd like to start this project as soon as possible. I'll hopefully try to get this done this fall, yeah, to hopefully weather cooperate. This is proposed to be funded through our General City Library Enterprise Fund. So, at this time, I'm just requesting to accept the quote for Delta Construction, $79,870.44.
Thank you.